Here we go. There we go, Mark.
All right.
Now he'll upload it later. I think we're good.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Seven. Oh, seven? Um. Let's really. Which is same as. Mark, just so you know, we have the cable from Alice.
Okay, I'll pop in and grab that probably tomorrow.
Thanks, Mark.
Minutes from last week. I didn't have any comments, none, none. I knew that we accept the minutes from three twenty seven. What these, is this the one you want, say?
Yes. And anything, you can put anything that I need, but at the end of the night in there, so.
You trust me?
I do.
Great.
I think the bright boulder is a good idea, Tina.
Okay, wouldn't this review? The information on the ordinance review. The information went to the, our attorney. Mostly for the LD two thousand and three. We have received the information back, haven't we?
We have a preliminary response. Question is, do you wanna, are we gonna proceed with it, or are we going to hold?
The public hearing is scheduled for next. Week nineteen.
I believe so.
The nineteenth, next Wednesday night. And so the public hearing is still set. The state hasn't. Passed the law. Reversing the date, so. The day is still July first.
Yeah, so proceeding as if that's still the case, yeah.
Where is the public hearing now?
The public hearing will be at the community center.
Oh, for our town.
Oh, no, this will be for our ordinance.
Both for the.
Considerables, yeah. Updating our.
Under two thousand and three is the one that allows for. More housing. What time?
I think it's six, but yeah, six thirty, six thirty. It will get out of here tonight, I have a.
So at that meeting, they're gonna decide whether we're going forward or not.
By then we should know. Yep. That at this point, we're going forward.
But it's up with the, up to the town to do it.
Oh, the state, the state is looking at a, right, at a bill that might change the timeline, so. So right now, we're proceeding as if that. If that bill is not happening, just in case it doesn't go through. So that's us, that's the state's decision. Our hearings to look at how. The committee interpreted. Any changes.
So we have to have public utilities and what about?
No.
No, they can, they can make. Just like any house, you could, you can set up your own septic system, drill your well. That kind of.
Yeah, I will say my, I mean, Carl and Bob, correct me if you have a different understanding, but my understanding from. The conversations between the ordinance review committee and the various state departments is that many fewer changes were required than we were originally expecting. And that's.
How many units?
This isn't this.
Be up to each individual to decide how many units they want to put on their property, could have potentially four, one, two leaker person. But if you have four units, you have to have two, two wells, or three places to look up to all.
Those are basically questions for the, for the committee when they had the public hearing. Yeah.
Broadband. Thank you, so. Kind of surprise visitor, Chris Lynch from Matrix Design Group, who has some pretty new information that the broadband committee. In its entirety, hasn't heard yet. And I'm gonna hand off to Chris in a couple of minutes, but I wanna. Make a report on the rest of the things the committee's been doing, but actually a lot of progress. So there's two categories, same as the last time I was here, one is. So-called digital inclusion. Which had to do with creating a program based at the library. To provide assistance to people who need help. Getting computer, getting computers, getting subsidized access to the internet. And learning how to use the tools to their advantage and safely. And along those lines. I put in a. Budget request for ten thousand dollars of ARCA funds. To be presented at the town meeting in June. To be spent next fiscal year, but that would not be town money, it would be. Whatever, I, my understanding is there's at least ten thousand dollars left of the ARCA funds. And the digital inclusion is appropriate use under the, the regulations. Since Chris is here, I don't want to take a lot of time on this, we can. The, the basic idea is to hire somebody to coordinate. Sessions of training that would occur at the library, along the lines of what happens for income tax preparation now. There would be people available at certain hours during the week. And individuals who think they could benefit from those free services would call up and make an appointment. We have five people who have already volunteered to be. Digital navigators. And we're also talking to the National Digital Equity Center in Machias. And they have set up arrangements with sixty-seven other, mostly libraries around the state. They just got four hundred thousand dollars to develop a program in Washington County. And the state is expecting about a hundred and twenty million dollars for this purpose. And so ultimately, the reason we're asking for this money is to get ourselves where started. And we expect that this initial, what I would call seed money, would eventually be replaced by grants. We have a grant application into the main community foundation. And we expect that by the time. The ARCA money and that money runs out, there would be a federal money available to sustain the program. I'd be glad to take questions, but I also, it's just plenty of time between now and June. Be glad to come back, whatever your pleasure. Okay, good questions on that. Okay, on the infrastructure. Oh, a lot of, it's happened, the, when the state approved fifty million dollars of grants in January. They placed towns like Mount Vernon in what they called the preference group three. And what that was with groups or towns that had more than fifty percent coverage by cable. And our committee, as you know, has been recommending. Basically replacing the cable infrastructure with fiber to the home. The state has called that future proof. And it has lots of advantages, I don't want to get into the, the engineering or technical stuff now. Consolidated Communications, the phone company has decided that they need to replace a lot of their copper network, so they, they had made a proposal to us. Before the state came out with its grants. To replace all of the phone lines in the town with fiber. Add a couple of hundred thousand dollars cost to the town. That proposal is off the table now because the state would not provide the level of subsidy. That they had been banking on. So right now, we have basically four proposals in front of us, maybe five. The. Consolidated is still looking at replacing the whole town with fiber. And probably getting grants only for the locations in town that do not have cable, about four hundred. Locations that get internet from the phone company. My guess is that if, when they look into that, they're gonna find that they're gonna need money from the town, I don't know how much. And I don't know what the willingness of the town is gonna be to raise taxes and pay for that. So the other proposals that we're looking at. And one which Chris is gonna talk about in a second. Has to do with providing fiber to the home. For everybody in town except the people who currently have cable. So that would be a kind of a disappointment for those folks because they wouldn't have. State-of-the-art technology and ultimately will have to be replaced, but for the people who don't have cable today. We're looking at Matrix Consolidated Communications. Spectrum or Charter Communications. And possibly Bienna. To provide fiber to the home to what are the state calls the least served locations. In town at no cost to the town. Okay, so I'm gonna let Chris talk a little bit about what they've come up with, he just sent me some information about a couple hours ago. So the ink hasn't quite dried, but, and then he can answer a few questions, some of this stuff is still a little bit up in the air. But, but. Why don't you go ahead, Chris, I thought you were here, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Matrix is going to be building a fiber-to-the-home network in the town of Fayette. The grant from the state is being finalized, there's actually a vote on it. Tomorrow, excuse me, on the fourteenth, and there's going to be a board vote on it on the twenty-first. All the indications are that they're going ahead and approving it. We're building not just in Fayette, we're also in Wilton. The model that we used in Fayette did not need any town money whatsoever. So the town of Fayette, they contributed some opportunities. Which they, they want to use for digital inclusion. And they also donated some land to, to Matrix, so we can house a, a. Telecom shelter, it's gonna be the head end for the fiber bill. The, the, the network is going to be one hundred percent fiber. It's future proof, it's what's called XGS PON, which is the next generation technology. It will have tiers available up to one gigabit symmetrical for people who really wanted to have really fast fiber. But the two key important things is there'd be no cost for installation. And there'd be very affordable tiers available for everybody. The people who qualify for the Affordable Connectivity Program from the FCC would be able to get a fifty megabit tier for just thirty dollars per month. They would also qualify for a thirty dollar rebate from the federal government, which, which in essence would make that internet connection for free.
Okay, just add one piece of color. When, when you talk about digital inclusion, one of the services proposed to be offered at the library. Is helping people who are eligible for that, what boils down to free. Internet access, helping them sign up. Cause it's not, you know, it's not, for one thing, you have to do it online, and sometimes they, people aren't even online yet, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
Not a problem. We also would have a one hundred megabit symmetrical tier, hundred megabits up, a hundred megabits down, for just sixty dollars per month. Which is very affordable. And again, it's symmetrical, so you're getting the fast upload fees which are necessary for telemedicine, for distance learning, for, for Zoom calls. Basically anything that's interactive in the, in the cyber world today.
But those are what you're offering, it's like, yeah.
That'll be.
And so what would you be offering in Mount Vernon?
Would be offering the exact same thing, would be extending the network from Fayette into Mount Vernon. The one thing I wanna make as a caveat is it would be a contiguous network. So we basically continuing on from Fayette, trying to get to any of the unserved locations that we can in Mount Vernon. And we'd only be passing the, the unserved locations, we might have to pass a few. You know, spectrum customers here and there, but for the most part, it would be all just the unserved people. But we think by doing that, we'd be able to get the majority of the town who doesn't have internet today to have high-speed internet.
So, sorry to ask this, but what's in it for you? I mean, the town's not paying you.
It actually, the, the, the money from the state makes it worthwhile, and we can't do it without the money from the state.
Okay. So that's going to cover your.
Yeah, it makes, makes the business model work. So in our past discussions with the town, one of the things that we would ask for would be for the town to pay for the, the, right away, which is the, the utility company make ready. And a place to house and power. Because it's gonna be a reduced number of homes that would be serving, we wouldn't need a place to house and power. And because of the amount of money that's available from the state, it wouldn't be necessary for the town to put up the money for the, the make ready. It's, it should be noted that, and you know, they, they had, I believe, a hundred, roughly a hundred and eight applications to the last grant round. The application we had for Fayette and the one we had for Wilton were in the top five as far as the contributions from the individual private company, which was, that was us. So we feel pretty comfortable that we'd be able to do the same, you know, for the unserved people in, in Mount Vernon. We'd also be looking to speak with the folks in Chesterville. Cause the southern part of their town is completely unserved. They did get an NTIA grant from the federal government to do the northern part of the town consolidated, but the southern part of the town is not.
Could I just add one thing to, to answer Carrie's question? What they get out of it, they get the revenues, they are, it is owned by Matrix Design Group, it's not owned by Fayette. And it would not be owned by Mount Vernon. So if somebody sent this fifty dollar a month check. For a subscription, they get it, and ultimately, based on the fixed costs and the take rate. And the cost of operating, they should be able to turn a profit in some number of years.
Yeah, and we're taking that risk that we're gonna be able to make a profitable business.
Well, I was thinking the make ready and all is quite an expense, so that's what I.
Yeah, that's, that's where the state money comes in, and also the, you know, helping to subsidize the, the very affordable tiers is where.
Well, we also paid Matrix quite a bit of money already, for their poll surveys and things like that, so.
So that helps as far as like, you know, we'd be able to hit the ground running. And we're gonna pay for poll survey data and put in the poll applications. The only kind of wild card here is, you know, the people in town pretty much know if they're served or they're unserved. But whether they show up as served or unserved on the state maps is, is the ninety, you know, thousand dollar question. And, you know, we're, we wanna work with the town to make sure that all the people who are truly unserved get, you know.
So, so let me see if I understand this. If currently I have a copper telephone wire coming to my house, but no other wire, am I unserved or served? At least served.
Your least served, yeah.
So it would call, your property would qualify for grant subsidy from the state. Okay, so we would come under this heading, yeah, and we would get a cable into our house, I'm gonna get fiber. Fiber, my cable is all technology that would be.
Okay, but fiber is what now?
It's, it's glass. Yeah, and it goes on the poles.
Yeah, yeah.
So you would come in half a mile into my house and do it, right? And make me very happy.
Yeah. Normally.
I do rolling in the streets.
Normally the connection is three hundred feet from the pole line. If you, be what spectrum, there is a hundred and fifty feet from the, from the pole line. But we'll, we're able to help out everybody to make sure that you get.
So you'd actually help me?
Maybe.
We.
We're out, maybe.
That's, yeah.
Three hundred feet, three hundred feet from where?
From the pole line, so sometimes the pole line is in the street, sometimes the pole line is in the woods.
Oh, I get the pole line.
Yeah.
I know holes up to my house.
Well, so, I'm fascinated with this situation, but the town situation, there's a, it sounds like there's a couple caveats for. What, what the distance is you would go to certain houses and how the fees rack up, right?
Yeah, so.
No, excuse me, would that be the same as your proposal to us the last time?
Yeah, so it's, with the only caveat is before the, there was a cost of four hundred dollars for installation fee. Here, there's no, there's no installation fee up to one year from the construction.
I think, if I recall, if your. Distance from a pole to your home is more than three hundred feet. I think you were gonna charge a dollar a foot.
Dollar.
Not, so if you don't get poles within three hundred feet, they're your poles, they come down your right away, your driveway, your.
Yeah, if you have a really long driveway, there probably is gonna be an extra charge. For, for the extra five. So like, we'll do a drop off to three hundred.
But there's more than one house on that.
If there's more than one house, then it's not really a driveway for us, like, shared driveway is kind of. West constituted road. You know, if there's more than one. That, at least that's the way we, we look at it.
But you'd have to then.
And if the road ends at my house. And it's a road, then you have to come down.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I like that.
Basically, the way, this is the same as the proposal that was defeated at the ballot in November. Except now, we're only talking to houses that don't currently have access to cable.
So the definition of served is what again, so if you, you fall into this term.
So the states have four categories of service, one was called least served. Which means that the speeds available were less than twenty-five over three, basically DSL.
Yeah.
And then the, the next tier was, I think, what, twenty, a hundred over twenty?
Or less than twenty.
Less than twenty, hundred over less than twenty is unserved. And then, hundred, served was a hundred over twenty.
Above twenty.
So who, who decides who's served or least served or underserved?
You know, they, as I said, they got a hundred million dollars of requests and they handed out fifty million dollars, so that their job was basically. To draw a line between who would get money and who wouldn't.
But I mean, how are they drawing that data? I mean, how, how do they know that? If I, you know, once had spectrum and now I have consolidated or vice versa, or we were drawing this data?
Well, they, they have sources of data that are not available to us, proprietary. They have, we have the poll survey that we got, we also got data from. They get data from the FCC. If you read the town newsletter, there was a, over the last year, there were opportunities to take a speed test. And send that data to the main broadband coalition, if you did that, that data was used. To, to validate the FCC data, cause it was felt to be quite incorrect. So everybody in this room was given a chance to send in their own data.
What if they didn't?
What?
What if they didn't?
That would be most people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, how, what, what are you talking about? How many people, would you think that this would benefit?
About four hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, about four hundred and ten homes. Now, we might not be able to get to all of them, but you know.
All of the four hundred.
Yeah, we, the more that we can get to, the better it is for us, the better it is for the town. Now, the, the NCA, the Main Connectivity Authority, is basing their data upon what's called the FCC Fabric Map. Which is a new map that's coming out in the spring from the federal government. And they're pretty much gonna go by that map, because it, it, it creates a level playing field to a degree for the entire state, if, if the entire state is using the same data. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna, Congress guarantee that the data's gonna be incorrect. Really? We have, but, yeah, you have to, you have to start somewhere, so. And I.
But if you don't have cable on your road, then you qualify.
Rule of thumb is, is if you have just DSL and no cable, you should qualify.
But if you have no cable, no DSL. What?
Yeah, we would still need to have like a utility pole line, so if you're living off the grid and there's no way for us to get to that house. There's no way for us to get to that house.
What about people who have underground?
Underground, they would have to provide us with a full string and usable conduit, and that's the same as a pole, a pole line as far as we're concerned.
So that anybody not served, so anybody in under that category that's not served, wouldn't, wouldn't be eligible for your service in any way.
I'm not sure if I follow.
Unless they put up a pole or.
Like, if, if they fall under the category of served, you know, they've got. Something greater than twenty-five over three, or whatever we said the metric was to, to be served, and they were like, hey, I really want. To be at a hundred, I want a different plan.
Sure, they would talk to you, but it wouldn't be part of the project.
If, if, if we pass them and they want service, we'd be happy to provide it, and if the state says that they're unserved and they're actually served. Then as far as we're concerned, they're unserved. Go ahead, Ted.
So, let's go back to the very beginning of this whole conversation, so you're gonna run fiber optic cable all the way through the town. But you're gonna bypass everybody that might have cable, to get the people that aren't there.
No, we're gonna be building a network in Fayette. And what we're gonna do is continue that fiber on from Fayette to the parts of Mount Vernon who are unserved that we can reach.
Fayette's way over there, a lot of the people are way over here that don't have it.
Well, we looked at it, like Long Pond, we were able to get all the people in that area, and Torsey Pond, all the people down there.
Long Pond?
I'm sorry?
Flying Pond?
I, I don't know all of the names of the ponds, which is one of the things.
Long Pond, Long Pond.
Long. Yeah, no.
Park of.
Pond Road, Pond Road.
That's the main roof coming down Vernon. I mean, you're, you're, that's, that's one tenth of Mount Vernon.
This is going to be, this is all dependent upon where the map say the unserved people are.
Yeah. And that's.
Talking about it. Yeah.
So.
But, yeah, it's. Is two choices, one is you either have a cable, a telephone line going past your house. Or you have telephone and cable.
Well, so, I mean, I, I agree, but it's more nuanced than that, because consolidated. If, if you call, if you say that I have a consolidated copper line go by my house that I'm served or whatever, consolidated doesn't have the bandwidth to add any more copper, so. There's some nuanced details that make it more complicated, and. You know, I, I, I think that when, when the whole bill comes in for the town or whatever, I mean, now we're talking about. You know, what is four hundred people, what percent of the town is that? I mean, it's better than nothing, I'm not, I'm not knocking it, I'm just trying to get, I don't, I live in details, I love figuring out, you know, what, what you're getting, what your return on investment is and what the, what the cost is.
This is early too, we need to sit down.
Interesting, cause.
Third of the town, DSL and two thirds of cable.
They're talking no.
Yeah, excellent, we know that.
Yeah, yeah, to be, doing, no, no charge to the town, no, no public funds.
Yeah, the, the, the decision here is the, and I, I don't think, you know. We don't have all the details today, so we can't really beat it to death, but the. The decision ultimately is whether the town is gonna wanna replace the entire town network with fiber. At some, probably some cost to the town. I don't know what that cost is, and we, we hope to have at least one proposal. From Consolidated to do that. The other proposals. From Matrix and from Spectrum. Are to build out the town. At no cost to the town, and frankly, they don't need any approval from the town.
Sure. Yeah, I don't, no, I don't put the town on voting on getting telephone wire.
Right, so, I mean, that's where we, I think the. The tough decision for the committee is to, to go down a path. Where two thirds of the town. Doesn't get subsidized fiber.
Yeah.
Because in the future, when the cable network is obsolete, the money for subsidies to re, to change over to fiber is not gonna be there.
Yeah, and you, you, I mean, you have the luck and for people who are looking past fiber also, I mean, fiber's not cutting in.
Well, I'm not, I'm too old to worry about that.
That's why I'm here, we got a good, we got a good. Okay, but that is my only other, but. I mean, we say not town money, but we're asking for ARCA funds.
Excuse me?
Is that, is that true?
No, there's no money.
No, no.
Spectrum submitted a proposal to the Main Connectivity Authority for what they call a line extension. They're gonna get an answer in this month, we didn't even know about it until last week, when we reached out to Spectrum. To say, we're trying to figure out what to do now. Now, what do you, you guys wanna talk to us? And she said, sure. And then she said, oh, and by the way, uh, if we get approval this month, you're, we're gonna extend cable to the whole town. And then, and they go, they didn't, they didn't bother. And the reason they did that is that they responded to an RFP from us. And they had the data they needed to make the proposal, which they didn't have in other towns.
So I just, I thought I heard you say there was a ten thousand dollar.
This is for something different. This is for, uh, yeah.
On our end, we wouldn't be asking the town for any.
My question is, you're roughly looking at four hundred people, how many of those four hundred people, like, year-round residents and not? People here are six months a year. They're all taxpayers, but I checked with the school, they smiled about it. I checked the school, I went to school board meeting, not too many kids in. Mount Vernon did not have internet access or Reed Field.
So, I just wanna understand, your point is that if it doesn't benefit the year-round residents.
I think if we should look, if you're gonna do something that's gonna benefit the whole town, not, we're not gonna worry.
We made a proposal in November that would benefit the whole town and it was.
We don't need to go backwards. The, the point is in terms of options.
Second and fourth Wednesday. You're all welcome to attend if you'd like to learn some more about this.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. We've gotta move on.
This is broadband, but it's not this related. We, Bill and I, I'm kind of stuck in the middle here, and I need to know what to do about any. Bills being submitted right now for the other fund ends of broadband. Because I have two.
There shouldn't be any goals.
I have an eight hundred dollar bill from Amanda for broadband conversations. You forwarded it to me, Anna, and I. I didn't put it on the board.
Okay, I can take, we can take care of that later. Let's, let's keep going, cause we got a bunch of stuff to do.
Thanks. We were going to talk about the main.
Yeah, we can do that, cause that's our cable work line is now. Yeah. Yeah, transfer station fees. I wanted to go off on a couple of them. Um, I wanna go through it fairly quickly. On the bathtub, non-metallic. It's ten dollars and wanna go to fifteen. On the shower stall, ten dollars, go to fifteen. The rugs, it's got a small and a medium. The medium is a six by eight. I, I want them to put both of those right into the trash bin, not the bulk items. Because what happens with the go, when they go into the bulk, rains on it, snows on it, more weight. Okay, so I'd rather have them put it in compact or compacted.
Is there a change in fee for that?
No, cause it, it does no fee then, if it goes into contact, compactor. Uh, and the larger rugs. Ten dollars on each, so the six dollar one goes to ten, the twenty-one, the twenty dollar one goes to ten. Reduction.
Okay, just, yeah.
Yeah. And the tires. Uh, the small ones, uh, three dollars instead of two, I think we already did that. The, the slightly larger one, eighteen inch, five dollars, we already have it at five. And the truck tires, fifteen instead of ten. So, did you get those, Tina?
No, I'm waiting, writing things, saying boss, writing it down.
I will give you the sheet. So I move that we, uh. Amend the transfer station fees based on those numbers that I just proposed.
Second.
Bob, I have a question, uh, it's, it's related to the transfer station. Been with there a long time, and I've been meaning to bring this to somebody's attention, but. After we have dump runs on Saturday and Sunday. The North Road and the roads here are littered with traction. And, you know, some of us have stopped to pick it up and stuff like that. It looks like shit. And is there any way that we can get some volunteers? Or someone to, to help on, you know, one day a week. After the dump closes at twelve to ride up the road, uh, on, on Pond Road and. And North Road and, and pick up anything that's laying there. I mean, sometimes it's unbelievable.
There was a mattress.
Huh?
There was a mattress on Saturday, I see.
Yeah.
I, I, how does this happen? I mean.
Uh-huh, people just load it in the back of the truck.
I know, but I mean, this is a beautiful town, and you, you drive down the North Road and you get. You know, it sounds like.
Is there any, is.
Melting and we see all that stuff.
Yeah, and just think about it, if there's any way that we can do something, uh, on, on one day or, you know, above a two days. You know, Sunday at one o'clock, if somebody, we could get somebody to run the roads and, uh, uh, pick it up.
What do you do with it once you go? Because the dumps close then, so what do you do with it?
Theoretically, the person who would do this would be somewhat associated with.
I like Megan.
Have a special key and one hour after. Yeah, I mean, maybe we could put it in the newsletter or whatever, we could coordinate a little drop off time.
Yeah.
Just after the fact or.
Something.
Or, or you could do it that morning, you ain't getting ahead of it, you don't necessarily have to do it after that.
I mean, I'm just familiar with forty-one and with the North Road, I can tell you, it's just. And, and I wanted to shoot my mouth off, and unbelievably, I did for some reason.
I'm like, if I put a notice in when we send her for May. Just stay.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, another thing too, uh. We're gonna schedule a, uh. A pickup at Reed Field though, uh, they'll allow us to bring hazardous. Items, uh, that's pills, outdated pills, uh, paint, um, old gas. Uh, all that kind of things. Uh, I'll get you a date to put in the, uh, I think it's gonna be July.
Little spring cleanup on the road and get some volunteers together and section it off and.
So, yeah.
Able.
I'll get that.
And my, my understanding was that everybody that brings something there has to register with us beforehand.
They do, yes.
Kinda tell how approximately how much.
There's a form that you fill out and you, the customers have to check off how much they had.
Really? I'll check. I had to take fifty-five gallons of antifreeze last year and have the free register, but there, there, says they would only take X number of gallons. Yeah, I got quite a bit of old gas.
Tina, it looks like Sunday, July ninth.
Okay, uh, North Road drainage, uh. I talked with two contractors, one is willing to do it, the other one wasn't. Uh, we have a third one that we're talking with. I talked with the state. They are, uh, ordering a catch basin, said it would be two weeks, we must be at least a week into it. Soon as we get the catch, catch basin, we can pretty much do the project. Ready to go, so keep on top of that. We had a meeting with. Amanda, leader, and she's willing to be our attorney for the town.
I thought you already did that and have a signed contract.
Yep, it's right here.
We met with her, she sent over the contract just recently.
Tina.
I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but I wanted to briefly ask you about Barbara. It's with the attorney. Right now, we can't talk about that. On the town. Taking down those signs that shut at the post office and. I hear it, I, I don't know. I, I don't either, and, uh, you know, the thing I've discussed is. I could say. Working on, I never told you that she might come because she might get emotional and, and all that, but I, I actually.
Thank you.
Because I heard. And she has the bodies of the dog.
Oh, I didn't know that. That was information I wanted to share.
It's there, believe me.
I trust you.
So, awaiting.
If you like it, we can hold on it tonight. Um, Cal worked on a, uh, policy for, uh, requesting, uh, public record. And. So, if we want. To vote on it, I will to accept the, uh, policy governing, uh, access to public records.
Second.
Unless it's on. It's gonna have to be, uh, there's a. Couple places that need dates.
Oh, okay, so we should sign it. Okay, okay, yeah, gotcha.
Somebody to update the websites of the meeting minutes and the agenda.
It should be.
We just look.
Can we get a copy of the public records?
Uh, as soon as we sign them. It'll be next meeting.
Or it can be posted on the website.
We can post it, yeah, and soon. Should be on the documents, right?
Yeah, it's behind, it is behind a week, one meeting. We don't have any meeting that's from March yet.
Right.
But there's one that's outstanding.
Oh, okay.
Two.
Yeah, that's only just one. Three thirteen. Right, we only have three thirteen with. But yeah, it's under documents instead of select. Under government, but it's under documents.
Okay, on the assessors contract that runs out this year, this, yeah. Um, so this is the, the end of this year. Uh, contract. I asked, uh, Bob to send a contract. For the next three years. So, um, maybe Tina can make copies of this for you guys to look at and go through for the next meeting. Um, and maybe you might wanna see the last one.
It was, it was with me, and then I zoomed into the last meeting, but Tina has it now. I packed it off with my budget.
I ordered some lockout taggo, uh, tags. And I didn't know what to put it on.
This is where it was.
It's gonna be for all our buildings. So if they, uh, um, turn off a breaker, they tag it. Or at the, uh, transfer station, they shut down a piece of equipment, they tag it out.
Twenty-three sixteen, I almost think. Under regular admin.
Yeah. Someplace on the end. I think I bought a hundred or something.
Okay.
We have another admin, uh, budget meeting next Saturday morning, ten o'clock.
Why do they do it on Saturdays?
What?
Why do they do this on Saturday?
We ran out of dates. Three hours in the morning, usually takes. Before we leave tonight, we gotta set, uh. Couple of things. Uh, the date for when the. Atticus get to Tina, so she can. Uh, the dedication. Stuff like that, so we're gonna do that tonight. We're prepared to come back.
Need room committee of people.
Um, but, yeah, I need names. You and Doug. Barry.
And Tom Jacobs said he would be on.
What's that? Hi, Bill Rosenberg here. Oh, yes, Bill. You want to, right?
Yeah.
What's that?
You're all good, you're a good Tina.
I think he does, I don't know, it's hard to tell. You got all the names?
Um, Barry, Tom Jacobs, uh, I don't have Doug yet.
It was double sided, so.
That's only five.
My emotional support.
Okay, that's six. So basically, you know who you are, so. You could just get together, start.
So, do they have to be voted on in the committee?
Uh, yeah, you just need to get together, set it up, who's gonna chair it, um, let us know. And, uh. Why don't you sell us back that program that you bought?
Oh.
Road program.
Oh.
And then they could use that.
Well, well. Buy another one. I don't like this.
You like it?
It's the same. It's the same price no matter how much.
Or we could get it from Lee. I think Lee has.
I don't know. I think he's, his is outdated.
His is outdated.
I think this is the old one. But I can get the information. It's really easy to get it. What is a hundred dollars property?
That's it. What it is, it's a it's what the state uses to classify a road. It's fairly, fairly, because it'll tell you how the tower looks, whether it's what types of conditions each road is. It also tells the condition of a dirt road. Whether or not the ditches are proper and all that stuff. Got any?
You can rate each one.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's probably out of date, but I feel like a past select board drove them all and raided them. This would have been a few years back.
Yes.
I can get a copy.
Yeah, I can get a copy of the last.
Or did you take it home?
Bro, the assessment.
If I took it home, there would be one there.
Yeah, that's all the assessments.
I can get all that stuff. It'd be a good time to start on that. The spectrum contract. Do we want to sit down with Spectrum?
I think we need to review the existing franchise agreement and see what we want to do.
Okay, do you want to set it up?
Let's set up a meeting with Spectrum or with us?
No, us and Spectrum.
Sure.
Okay.
When do you want to start?
Whenever you can.
I'll reach out to Shelly.
Okay.
Bob, don't you need to have an appointment for the minute for each of these?
Yeah, so I'll make your chair.
She would make that out.
I will want you, want you name everybody. If you name somebody else.
Okay.
Name somebody else and then I'll, I'll get all the appointments ready.
Yeah, I would just talk up the appointments based on that list they gave you.
Yep. Yep, I already.
To advertise and open or whatever.
Yeah.
You're getting involved or whatever.
Maybe that's something you can put in the newsletter.
Yep.
So you do.
I think you, did you?
I had it on the website until this weekend when we put the closing of the transfer station. On Sunday.
I think it would be good to talk to Lee, if he would be a part of this, if he can tell us what he knows about the road, you know. He can point some things out that may be helpful too.
Okay. Spirit of America, I will talk to you guys later about this. I'd like to nominate somebody. And the reporting. I talked with Eric, now manager over in Reed Field. And he kind of led me in the right direction on how to fill it out. And it's gonna be a lot easier than what we were, that's gonna work around, because what we were doing was extremely hard. The audit status, we should be receiving this week.
Yeah, I, it's kind of thing Wednesday sticks in my mind.
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
Should be this week. Tina?
Yes.
This is the signed copy of the. That's the. Piece of, yeah. Okay, the ACO would like permission to purchase a badge. He has one for Reed Field. It's an official looking badge, a hundred and thirty dollars. It would say town of Malvern and DCO. And I'd say you probably should, since he's going into people's yards and taking dogs and stuff like that. And that way you'll have something to show on. So I would move that we pay for a badge of one hundred and thirty dollars.
Back.
Vote. You get that tax, Tina? One thirty? Anna, would you like to write the town report letter this year?
Sure.
You do a good job. These were the ordinance changes, the fees that were changed by us. Did we try to get them in to the ordinance itself, like? Or is it like too late to get Sue to put them in?
The public meetings next.
Yeah.
Week.
Too late.
Maybe too late.
There is okay for us to.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Potential sustainable if you don't put them right in the moment and then we can shift them without it being.
Amen. Yes, I got one more thing. I contacted the engineering firm of AE Hartston. And to get a price for looking at the sand shed. MMA keeps hopping on us and also to look at the north wall, the one that's facing Belgrade with the fire section. And they came up with a one thousand dollars. So I would propose putting it in budget for next year. If if there's extra money towards the end of the year in the transfer station budget.
Yeah, we can use that.
Do something, but for now, I would just put it in the budget. Have a report from the dog officer for the town report. And that's about, yeah. What do you guys have?
You covered all the lists I'd written down, but you saying that Tina and Bob and Carl. Realizing it's April. Would it help if I reached out to the town committees about getting their reports in or have you already done? Okay. I'm just working. I'm just waiting to get a current list of everybody's writing some of this stuff. Okay. Okay, yes.
Let's see. June seventeenth is the town meeting. So you need to get you need to get them in by the twenty, May twenty sixth. You need to have all the reports in.
That sounds about right. I'd tell everyone a little early. Oh, absolutely.
Earlier than that. Cause I'll get the.
I don't count. I asked you once. And if you don't get it, it doesn't get submitted. I mean, I just, I don't wait.
And I'll check with Paul on John Hagel. He's the one that prints them. So I'll find out that information.
I might have that in my. Mm hmm. I wondered about that too, my other idea.
Was it? Yeah.
They were the two I thought of.
Yeah, I would go.
We're talking dedication.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we're writing, just so everyone knows.
Talking what?
Dedicate the town report dedication.
Oh. You mean it's not the week? Just, just wondering. Yeah. That's great.
Those are my ideas. And so.
Okay.
At the top.
What, what the?
An idea from Carrie.
I think she's already been.
What is that? We're dedicating dedication? I think we have a better. Yeah.
What is the, what is the ARPA report?
ARPA is.
I mean, I know what it is. I mean, like, what is the, what's?
Every April thirtieth, we have to tell the treasury how much we've spent.
And on what?
On the after report, yeah. I mean, that's.
Well, how much you get every year?
No, we've already received everything that we're doing here received.
In total?
Yeah.
And you have to how long to spend it?
Two thousand twenty six, I think.
And how much have we spent?
How much is spent?
Uh.
Eighty.
Twenty.
No, hundred and something.
Maybe twenty eight thousand, I should think.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think I brought that. Just curious what it's found.
Are we gonna put the rest of that towards the bridge now?
I was gonna say. Not sure.
We had already paid Matrix digital survey. The full survey, we paid the lawyer for the ballot question. And we paid some difficult equity.
Yeah. And got my dollars in it.
Yeah, and some Remington French that paid for some contracts. So what are we doing with the money that's left over?
We haven't decided yet. It's in the budget. It will be in the budget this, but we haven't decided.
We decide that the select board decision.
Don't you know meeting?
So. So I have a question and I'm sorry. Because, like I said, I, okay. This, the town is going to take out the main philanthropy.
Yes.
Sixty dollars.
Yes, that should come out of our account.
I what do I do with this? It's Amanda for eight hundred dollars.
Yep, that should come out of both. Yeah, this should come out of our account.
Out of the legal or found or out of broadband?
Legal.
Okay. Because what I, what I was gotten little with is that I was being told that she gave an opinion that they could use the rest of the money. The markup.
Right. And I agree. Because of the way I asked the question to MMA was not correct.
It's not the rest of the money. It's the author of it.
Correct. Right, right.
Okay, so the fact that, okay, so you, you're saying, and this is where I'm in a hard spot because the official answer was you got the opinion from MMA and I got the opinion from MMA. And the select board said no more money for broadband.
Right.
So that was in an, in an open meeting. So in order for me to pay any more bills out of that, that money.
Right.
You have to make a decision in an open meeting that I can't extend that money.
Right. And that should come under legal. And we're not gonna spend it out of our we're not spending more money on broadband until a town meeting comes up.
Okay, but you, okay, now I'm getting confused because you just said, I you just said that we can spend the rest that was authorized.
Right, we could, but we're not going to.
Okay, then I don't understand why that would come out of legal, not out of it, it has to do with broadband completely. So I don't understand why it's coming out of the legal budget for the town.
Well, we last, we asked for a legal opinion. It's just like.
Spending it on broadband.
Right, and we're, we're gonna be dealing with a legal opinion tonight, so.
But in the special town meeting, you asked for the broadband initiative. ARPA and that was voted down. So that should have cut off that broadband money from any further expense.
I don't want to debate that.
Yeah.
Cause we're, if we spend any more on broadband, it'll be at a town meeting.
Okay, and Bill understands that because.
There, there was, there was a, there was a situation where the possibility of another option came up and that's why Bill was pressing for that question to be answered.
Okay.
That, that is not gonna happen, so.
Okay, because I'm trying to say to that question, because I felt like I'm, I'm in the middle.
Right, and you shouldn't have been.
I'm saying.
He shouldn't have been dealing with us. And I, I saw those emails going back and forth and I talked with Kyle. I said, no, I shouldn't have been done that.
I think the part where I'm confused that I mean, at a town meeting, we said we weren't gonna spend money on broadband and we spent it on broadband and then we're gonna go back to the town meeting to.
No means you don't, but it wasn't even known this time. We're gonna wait for a town meeting. We haven't done.
Isn't that? This is a difficult year. That money was supposed to be spent. We wait for the town meeting. That would be another medical year.
Right.
That money's supposed to be spent before. So it has to be spent before the town meeting.
You have up to two thousand twenty six.
I really think money ought to go to the bridge. Help us there.
Well, it might. Yeah, it might.
I just can't. I'm trying to.
We have.
Spend it, but we did.
What's that?
I just, I mean, I may be, I may be, I'm missing something, but I mean, there was a pot of whatever that money was that hadn't been spent, right? Fifty, fifty or a hundred or what was it? What do we start at?
Hundred and eighty.
A hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
And we spent it on.
We didn't spend it all, but we spent the good part of it on broadband.
But so who authorized to spend it on broadband?
Well, it was.
Have a special town meeting.
There were two different.
Oh, the two different. The first one was, yes, spend it on the.
That's just.
There's, there's a balance on the, on the broadband and there's a balance on the bridge. We didn't spend it all on either one. So there is a balance there. I think. I don't have my full list though.
I don't think we spent any of it on it. Oh, I guess.
Yeah. Thirty one thousand I can't expect.
Thank you, Grant.
We're pushing for a solution that'll not cost the town anything for broadband. That's what we're pushing for.
Great. I just, you know, you, you, when you get, you get an opportunity to have extra money come outside that we need to blow all that and have nothing to show for it, but a survey and a of, you know, opinion poll or whatever. It's like this stuff, you know.
Well, I think the reality is that it has it is delivering something. It's not what we targeted, but I think that there are some byproducts, if you will, with these new grants or these new options coming in.
Yeah, good new point.
Yeah. Yeah.
You have that funny? Oh, oh.
Yeah.
I guess we can build up there.
I don't think you all paid ten thousand dollars to my job. Well, maybe it hasn't been up to you for. I don't think you all paid ten thousand dollars to my job, well, maybe they haven't given you for. Free or you still wanted.
Thanks, Grant, of course.
Kyle, anything? Um, you had two, I thought you had two questions.
Yeah, uh, scribe like, yeah, we were gonna talk about the pen, the scribe light.
You know what I had about that? I know that you talked about requesting it, I don't know anything about it, how it works, but.
Uh, well, Scott had looked.
It's honest.
It up and.
Pretty good.
Said it looks pretty good, um, Tina has used it before. But the thing is that it's, it's light enough, and it wasn't planned for in this year's budget, so. Um.
Is it something that you can use, Tina?
Yeah, because when I try, if I try to go back and listen to a meeting on YouTube, it's pixelated, the, 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 the. The audio is awful, I cannot listen to the meeting.
I think we might be better off doing what we're doing today.
I was gonna say, I heard you say you're recording, if you're record, if you can record these meetings, then I don't need it, I just need something that. Clear and concise that I can go back and listen to, like, when I was coughing, I know you guys had a discussion, I'm a slow thing, and I can't listen to it on YouTube.
Let's wait, then.
We also had um a mini recorder that I know Mac was using when he was taking minutes. And it was the chance, and do you remember that, Alice?
What?
The mini recorder that we have.
Oh, yeah.
It's so much older.
Well, do you wanna see? What do you think? Do you wanna see if you like this? And then if not.
Yeah, if we could do it just same time.
So this isn't being broadcast to YouTube tonight.
Correct.
Correct, it's being, just recorded on the, on the cloud.
And maybe the sound will be better, it really has been un, unlistenable, and everybody, I thought here. I think we've got somebody waving in the hall.
Hello.
Hi, we wanted to ask if there is a timeline to have the barricades removed from the Honey Moose Road, which we. Asked for back in November, for which a town sent out the letter on December eighth with a forty-five day. Timeframe, which has still not been as of four o'clock, so the barriers were still up.
Yeah, are they frozen, or they could be moved now?
We went down before the last town meeting last Monday.
Okay, I'll call.
Everything was frozen, everything was good, he had had his skidder outs, we got that so-called that Saturday, the twenty-fifth. He had had his skidder out, he drove all around the barricade, he has no intention.
Okay, I'll call him tomorrow.
If he refuses to take it down, can we take it down? My parents do not have access to that side of their property, and that's not a pet. They have a picture of the barricade, since we couldn't get anybody to go down and actually look at it, it's not anything.
I can't say, I can't say.
It's not anything that can rival work, he's pulled tree length logs and boulders out with this heavy equipment, and it's blocked my.
Is that, oh, this is just a tree, or there's several trees in there?
There's rocks.
Oh, rocks, too.
But that, Danny, that picture was March twenty-seventh, and from the date of the last meeting. And he, I can show you video, he drove his skidder all around that, including on my parents' side of the property, he could have moved it that day. You can keep them, I got my pictures. My parents are being barricaded from going down and using the end of the road at all. If they wanted to cut down these on their own property, they can't pull them out, and it's been well past time. And if we do go down, are we able to get law enforcement to go down with us?
Yes.
Because otherwise, we're gonna get accosted.
Yes, you can, you can do that, and that's what I would recommend, that you not go. I've also recommended that the ACO have a sheriff with them when he goes down.
He told me that was y'all, dog, he weren't gonna do it.
Oh, not the ACO, yeah. Bill, who said it wasn't only his responsibility to make sure that the letter got delivered, not anything else, which is not what the letter from the town sounds like.
You talking about Bill? Bill?
Yeah.
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
It says the CEO will be sent out to ensure the request has been polished, he's like, nope, I just made sure the letter was delivered.
Okay, um, he has, um, the ACO has been given a warning on his pigs. ACO. Eric Johnson.
The animal control officer, why would he be involved? He's not down there every day, I don't know how he's, I don't know how he's able to keep livestock down there when he's not.
No. He's not supposed to be living anywhere.
Okay, as far as I know, there's no power or well or anything down there, I don't know how those animals are being cared for.
That's what maybe ACO is dealing with.
Well, so the pigs got loose Monday, the twenty-seventh, which was the day of the last meeting. I was up until ten thirty with ECO, having to get up at four thirty in the morning to go work a ten-hour job, and we went through parts of my property, trying to find them. The pigs were still loose six days later on Sunday, and I think ACO called you from our house. Um, but in that amount of time, the animal owner made no attempt that I, that any of us could see to go find those animals. Like, just none. I mean, there were sightings, I stepped out into the road to keep a guy from hitting one of them with his truck.
Well, after a warning, um. If the pigs are loose again, uh, the ACO will take the pigs away.
Will he be able to go down in and ensure the welfare and care of the animals as well as the. Security of their enclosures, because he told us Sunday, that last Sunday, that he came to corral the pigs. He wasn't allowed to do that, he was only allowed to go to the front door of the property, which he said was fifteen feet off the road, which means he was. Referring to the shed. As I asked him, I said, there's other animals down there, please, can you go check on them and make sure they're okay? We hardly ever see him, he told us he was only allowed to go to the front door of the property, he could not see the other animals. From the house.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know how many animals are in there. Let him go in unless he has a sheriff. I'll talk to him tomorrow.
I don't think that should be in Bill's.
Bill, the AC, I mean, the video.
Yeah, that shouldn't be in his corner there.
He has to address uh, the living condition.
Yeah. Right, but I mean, someone's gonna pass some, something to move, that should be a sheriff, that should be an order.
Right.
Um, and I wanna speak about Bill, I've heard some bad things hearing about Bill, I've worked with a lot of. Of these guys through my career, he's good, he tries to go by the law.
Yeah.
You hired him to go by the law, the guy needs three days a week instead of one day a week to do his job.
Yeah.
And then they're still be stretching it, um, and I've had a. Few of the contractors that like him, and like him, they said, you know where they stand, we're gonna treat everybody equally, so.
I agree. Okay.
Um, is there a timeline on me getting the instant report from the ACO?
You can't get a report from the ACO.
Um, cause my next step is gonna be to call the state animal welfare program.
You can do that. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yep.
Between you and Ricky, it was decided it was only gonna be foot traffic on a heavy roof.
No, it didn't say that.
Yeah, it says, the, yeah, it says, but traffic shall not be prohibited or something to that effect. As we agreed today on the phone, you will now allow foot traffic through the Honey Moose Road right of way. Does that mean that my parents and I are not allowed to drive our vehicles down there? Or because that's effectively what's.
I think there's something, you guys are gonna have to work out.
Well, if my parents, technically, at this moment, based on.
He's making a right of way. Does he gain any right?
No. I mean, that, that right away, the way, the way I best understand the different laws, that, that, right away, you all have equal ownership to that. That's, that's, that's between you and you, it's shared, a shared partnership for you to. You know, planes, trains, and automobiles, you can't sign, you can't do anything.
The way it's been running so far, it's nothing shared, it's all his.
You know?
Yeah, the first part of that road or it's not his anyway.
But that's the part he's out there every day dumping gravel on.
Well, he's wrong, so you, you know, it, it, and I'm, I don't know, I mean, you, you can pursue it however you want to, the legal act. Because what, what's gonna end up happening, based on what I understand, it's the same similar road situation, that stretch of road. Which eventually probably causes the money to get an actual survey to figure out where that rerod of road actually takes place over the earth. But if, if it has, uh, historical precedence from like, most of them around the town have stone wall to stone wall. For years, so it'll be in your D, you know, on each east, north, southwest boundary where that road runs. You all would have um, equal, equal rights to that, it's probably about forty-nine feet, but they're all three rod. Which is a weird English term for, comes out to like forty-nine feet, so that forty-nine feet stretch of. Old road where it's discontinued between your lots, whatever lot numbers they are, you all would have equal rights to.
Right.
You cartwheel down that thing, push a cart, drive a horse, ride a car, whatever you wanna do, can't stop you.
Oh, and he can, he shouldn't be able to, but. He can, because he physically is.
Well, that doesn't make it right, I mean, you, you, I mean, people can do, make sure, everybody makes sure, he can do whatever he wants to do. But to be here, we will be held accountable for that, for whatever means you choose to hold him accountable, and it sounds like what's happening is the escalation of that. Verbal, written, then you get the law involved, and then, you know, if you all wanted to get lawyer, I'm not an expert, so don't put me on this, and whoever. I'm just telling you my understanding of it, because I like facts and data.
The town has stated very clearly what the boundaries are, and I don't feel my retired parents who have lived in this town and paid taxes. Their entire adult lives should have to fork out four to six rounds to get a sheriff down there to serve them. I don't think that's fair, when the town has the ability to uphold its own.
I don't know. You don't have to pay, you get the sheriff, you call the sheriff and say, we got a problem, the road's blocked. Right. Hell with the lawyer, call the sheriff's. Yeah. Get a sheriff out there, you know, just, just go for it, uh, say this guy has blocked the road, it's illegal. Yeah, and he's threatening you.
Yeah, and you have your D. Use the proper terminology, it's, it's a right, it's not a road, I mean, it's, you, you have a right of way for access to your property, the road is discontinued because the town does it. So that, that road went back to ownership of, the term public is confusing, because it's not public, it's not all of us, you people who have a boundary. Associated with the right to get through that boundary now.
You have property of what I said, right?
People that own property on that.
Right.
Right of way.
Right.
Yes, you folks, your daughter, Al Parks, and the people on the other end of the road on the opposite side.
So it's all of you against him, and just pick up the phone and call the sheriff, and don't, you know, you're asking.
Yeah.
I called the game on, and he said hit the.
No, you need the sheriff, yeah.
Because of the animals.
Sheriff or the state. The state trooper lives right up the road from you, so, call him up. You know, you know.
State trooper, man, he lives in that park itself.
I mean, in my opinion, you have one, one avenue going now, and obviously, nothing happens fast in the government, unfortunately. So they're gonna have to go through the process, they, you know, verbally issue the warning, he has time to comply, you're right, young. My, my opinion, you're right to come to try to follow up on that, and, but, you know, just have to keep following up as it'll escalate, and then. Somebody go down there and serve him a certain amount of time before a fine comes.
I think you can go to the courthouse and actually fill all paperwork and have it served by a sheriff from the courthouse.
Yeah, I'm not.
I just think that panel has. I don't know.
I mean, so thi- this is what MMA, this is like, this is like right in their wheelhouse. I mean, there's chapter and verse of MMA because of all the goofy main laws and the times and the. MMA has chapter and verse on it, and it's one of the most useful things that they do, is to compile. The historical cases and the precedent behind which the main state courts have ruled.
What was sent out in December, and it says that because the road was declared abandoned.
But there was, didn't I give you the attachment to that? Yeah, that's what you wanna show the sheriff, that's what you wanna show him.
It was, it was not abandoned, it was officially discontinued in nineteen twenty-eight.
Okay.
And it does say on there, I'm looking at Al Parks, thank you, I can remember his last name, um, it says subject to a twenty-five foot right of way along. And it goes on and on, so you guys need to look at your deeds to see what it says.
Okay.
Yeah, so you go on the internet and go on the deeds register for.
County registry.
And you pop in your little lot number.
Yeah.
Or whatever it is, and then, you can pop, you can put in any lot number you want, because all that's public records, so you mean, you can put in mine lot number, or anybody who wanted to see.
Matt Loucher, the registrar, new office.
You have the website, but, so once, the problem is, once the town tells you that the situation, so, you know, if it wasn't discontinued. So if somebody, if, if, if they're stopping you from proceeding, call the police.
Yeah.
I mean, the same way, if somebody's on your property, and they shouldn't be, call the police. And file a report, and, yeah, I like to make clear the facts of it.
Yeah, and same.
I still think that that, whether, whether it was discontinued willfully or discontinued, either way, that, that. That road was historically your property boundary, and then the way that it, it, it deteriorates from there means that now it's a property boundary. And you have a wider way to get through it, because it, it splits land and.
And there is the threat of violence, and I think you should say that for the, uh, for the sheriff.
Well, I went down one day, I went through the woods, and after he got his pit bulls off, even, he said, don't come through the woods again.
Well, well, see. And, and the sheriff and tell him you're afraid for your life, you need to come out there, and. You have no so-and-so, you can't fight anybody with a fist anymore, and you know, you're being cruel.
No, don't, the sheriff doesn't like.
No. Call him and say you're scared, and, uh. Well, I'm gonna tell him that he didn't take the barrier out like I asked him to, when, when is he gonna do that? And I'm also gonna say, the ACO has been in touch with him and about his animals, and what, what is he doing about care? And he will be checking on that. He's also got the pit bulls.
Has any, has, has anything been done, has any information been learned about the dogs? Because I used to walk that road all the time with my sisters, and I don't dare to at this point.
Well, when the sheriff goes up and the pit bull go at the sheriff each, you'll know, right?
Yeah, it's a page, it, it sounds like, yeah, but between the animal control officer, the town issue the ordinance, the code enforcement of what. In the right way, then you gotta go, and you're, it's the next, it sounds like the next thing would be, you gotta go to the sheriff, to the police and. You know, make sure that you're allowed to access once your property, and then if that escalates from there, then you have to go to court over it.
We need to call him. Yeah, Ethan's not the war lighter. He's what? As well as. I don't know the deeper point, but, just call the sheriff.
You're gonna let us know what transpired?
Yes. Yep. Anything else? We are going to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.